Good morning, and I would like to welcome everyone who is present in the chamber, and those who are listening online to the business of the Health Scrutiny Committee for Lincolnshire. I would also add, for those of us that are in the council chamber, there is no fire drill planned this morning. In the event of the fire alarm sounding, we need to leave the council chamber through the rear doors, through reception and assemble in the car park at the front of the building, and await further instructions. I would also request all members to place their phones on silent, and to ensure everyone has the opportunity to ask a question, to ask a maximum of two questions per item, and to keep these succinct and concise. As the meeting is being streamed in the usual way, I would like to remind you that all comments will remain accessible online. I'd now like to move into Agenda Item 1, Apology for Absence and Replacement Members. Trina.
Thank you, Chairman. We've received apologies for absence today from councillor Thompson, councillor Harrison, councillor Hagues, councillor Scalazy, councillor Robins, and we've also had an apology from councillor Woolley, the executive councillor for community engagement, registration and coroners. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. I'd now like to move to Agenda Item 2, the declarations of members' interests. Do members have any interests to declare at this point? No? Should anything come up within the meeting, then please just indicate, and we'll record it down. I'd now like to move on to Agenda Item 3, the minutes from the 18th of January. You'll find these in the pack on pages 3 to 11, and as I think you've all had the opportunity to read these, I'd like to propose we take these on block. I have a second for my proposal. Thank you, councillor White. All those in favour, please show. Thank you. Abstentions? Thank you. Okay, they're carried. I'd now like to move on to Agenda Item 4, the chairman's announcements. My announcements were circulated as part of the agenda, and my supplementary announcements were circulated on the 14th of February. Are there any questions on those, please? Councillor Smith.
Thank you, Chairman. My points are as follows. It's all well and good, His Majesty's Government's stating we're enabling trusts to open up more beds, but if a hospital is physically at capacity, i.e. has no more rooms it can use, and can't expand because it has no land to, then it doesn't matter how many more beds that the government allows us to open, or allow the trust to open, you simply cannot ramp up the number of beds. The care, patient care and the quality of said care is obviously in need to urgently ramp up the number of training places, because if there's no staff, again, you can't have the number of beds. That would help in the medium to long term, Chairman, but in the short term, we are going to have real problems, because whether NHS colleagues want to admit this or not, recruitment from abroad has reached saturation point and cannot solve the problem long term. And for the long term, medium, as I've already said, we're going to have considerable difficulties, and obviously this is going to impact on patient care. Chairman, point B at section 5 in your announcements, to me, smacks of de-skilling, much like how things around radiographers have changed. I know our NHS colleagues take a rather different view on this subject. Lastly, Chairman, with respect to your supplementary announcements, the Lincolnshire System Recovery Support Programme, it's deeply concerning that there is a negative variance of £15.3 million in its accounts, as it was expected to break even. What is being done to rectify this? And will that adverse situation have any impact on treatment and patient care? Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Smith. I'll try and cover everything, and I'll get Simon to fill in for the gaps. In terms of the size of the hospitals, I mean, obviously, there is that issue. We have got an expansion that will be happening over at Pilgrim, of course, that's for accident and emergency, more as opposed to beds, but there is funding out there for new hospitals. Quite clearly, I think it's Scum Forbes that's currently in the process of applying to try and get that sort of funding as well. I'm trying to cover everything that he said, councillor Smith. I'll bring in Simon, see if he's jotted down more of the other part.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. The second point on the Recovery Support Programme for the Lincolnshire system, maybe that's something that we could seek more information from and bring back to a later meeting. Thank you, Chairman.
Was that everything, councillor Smith, we covered?
Nearly, Chairman. The other point was, and I'll find your announcements, so do bear with me, it was section 5, when I find it? It was section 5, and I'm trying to find it now. And it was around the, oh, that was it, it was around the use of medical technicians, I suspect, working with 111, and how, again, it's very much like radiographers, that years ago, you had to be a radiographer to read from a radiographer, and now it's, oh, no, your assistant can do that, much like instead of being a, instead of seeing a GP, you see a nurse practitioner and similar sorts of things.
Yeah, thank you, councillor Smith, of course, that they're trying to actively encourage more people to come forwards and take these roles on, but, you know, there is an issue with recruitment and retention. We are looking at the New Campus for Living in Mablefort, which, again, hopefully will go towards more recruitment and retention, and of course, Lincoln's Medical School is increasing year by year what it's offering. We had the presentation where they're looking to stand alone soon enough, and so I think we're in a reasonable position, but of course, it is an uphill battle. So, but thank you. I've now got councillor Wooton.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. On section C, where it talks about the care hubs, care transfer hubs, can you tell me, have you got any figures yet of how many people have been transferred to these hubs from hospitals? Thank you.
I'll bring Simon in and see if he's got that information.
I don't have that information. I can seek that answer. I mean, this, this plan was, the government's plan was issued on the 30th of January, so given that we're just two weeks on, I would have to see whether there is anything planned for this, so I can, another one's on my list to get more information on. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Wooton. Well, I'm sure that we'll try and bring that back. Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Chairman. I just want to carry on some of the points that was raised by councillor Smith, and I do appreciate this as a national plan, as opposed to one that affects Lincolnshire in particular, but I'd just like to make a couple of comments. 5,000 new hospital beds is about a 5% increase in total hospital beds, and that would strike me to be effective, requiring a 5% increase in staff members to a great extent. We hear from some of the current issues that it is very difficult to actually service the current number of beds, although I do find it strange, because we've got 340,000 nurses and only 100,000 beds, which strikes me as three nurses per bed, but maybe they're not all working on the front line. So it does seem as though that is going to require significant investment in resources to actually provide an effective input to the COVID recovery plan, and as councillor Smith says, you know, the ability to recruit those abroad is quite difficult, never mind, in my view, immoral, and actually producing an increase in the local workforce, so actually provide those sort of posts is going to take time. So I just do not see how this is going to effectively have a real, a real impact on the recovery. It's a nice headline to send out, but if we're relying on that sorting out some of the problems that we've got at the moment in the health service, I think it's going to be fairly remote that that's going to come instantaneously.
Yeah, thank you, councillor Allen. I think the best we can do is have a conversation with the ICB, see how they plan on rolling it out at a more local level, and see what plans are there, and ensure we bring that back to the committee at a later point. Okay. In which case, any other comments? No? Do I have a proposal that we note my announcements, please? Foes councillor Ray Wooton, seconded councillor Smith. All those in favour, please show? Thank you, that's supported. In which case, we'll move on to Agenda Item 5, ULHT, Planned Care Recovery and Restoration. This item was circulated as part of the agenda pack on pages 19 to 34. This item updates on the recovery of planned care at United Lincolnshire's Hospitals NHS Trust, and follows a report on this topic for the whole Lincolnshire system in May of last year. I therefore like to welcome our presenters from United Lincolnshire Hospitals, Andrew Morgan, Chief Executive, and Michelle Harris, Chief Operating Officer. If I can hand over to you, please, just for a quick run through, and we'll take questions at the end. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Morning to you, morning to scrutiny members. I hope you're all safe and well. Delighted to have this topic today. I know we spend a lot of time talking about urgent and emergency care, both within the trust, within the system, but occasionally with your good selves as well, so it's good to be able to get on to a really important linked topic, which is obviously the planned care, and that this is a topic that really does matter to patients, about how long they wait for their treatment, it matters to our politicians, and I think it matters to the wider general public about the degree of confidence that they have in the ability of the NHS to look after them. Hopefully, you will be aware that waiting lists are one of the Prime Minister's top five priorities, that he announced fairly recently. The aim, of course, is to cut waiting lists, so the promise from him was that waiting lists will fall, and that people will get the care they need much more quickly. That's reflected in the planning and priorities guidance for the NHS for the year that starts in April, and there was already a pre-existing delivery plan for planned care recovery following the pandemic, and that plan came out, I think it was February last year. The topic is about both waiting lists and waiting times, so both are how many, but also how long people wait, and for many individuals that contact us and that talk to our clinical colleagues, they are less interested in how many other people are waiting on the list, what they're interested in is their particular position as to how long will they have to wait for their treatment. And just to give you a reminder of the national standards that have been set for this, so by the end of March 23, so a few weeks' time, nobody should have waited more than 78 weeks for treatment. By the end of March 24, nobody should have waited beyond 65 weeks for treatment, and by the end of March 25, nobody should have waited or be waiting more than 52 weeks for treatment. Those are clearly the national sort of backstop standards. You'll see from the slides that Michelle will take us through in a minute, we always have aspirations to go further and faster than those particular standards. And to put it into context, you know, we cleared the 104-week waiters last year, so people were not waiting more than 104 weeks. Just to remind you, pre-pandemic, we would not have had anyone waiting more than 52 weeks for treatment, that was the absolute maximum, and our reported figure at that time, what was that, March 20, was zero. So you can see how during the pandemic, all of the changes that happened, all of the delays that happened, and then the resurgence after the pandemic, accepting we still have COVID to some extent at the moment, you can see how waiting lists and waiting times have built up, why it is now one of the key national priorities to be on top of those particular figures. I'm also aware when people talk about waiting lists and waiting times, this is not just about people waiting for operations. This is the full range of treatments, whether it's outpatients, people waiting procedures, people waiting for diagnostic tests, as well as those people waiting for an operation. That's why you'll have seen in the slides, we talk about admitted waiting lists and non-admitted waiting lists, and again, Michelle can get you into some of that detail if you want, but waiting lists will always include people who have been put on those waiting lists very, very recently, waiting for their outpatient appointment, they will be included in some of those numbers that you will see quoted. Apologies that you have got a very detailed slide pack. I don't imagine Michelle is going to take you through every one of those slides, or at least I hope she's not going to take you through each and every one of those, but the important point is, whilst there is a mass of information in there, we never forget that each of those numbers is a real live person, somebody else's loved one waiting for treatment, somebody who may be in pain, may be in distress, may be in discomfort, not knowing what the future holds for them. That's why when we talk internally to our clinical colleagues and our support colleagues, and to you and others, we never, ever forget that this is about real people. It's not just about targets, not about spreadsheets, not about slide packs, it's about how do we get people treated as effectively and as efficiently and as quickly as possible. That's why a lot of the work that we do is about our own productivity, our own internal processes, about making sure the right people are on the right list at the right time, that have we got our day case rates right, that we can do more cases? Have we got the right number of follow-up outpatients? Have we got our theatre utilisation rates right? Do we make it as easy as possible for people to book or change their appointments? Do people know how long they're likely to be waiting for either an outpatient, a procedure, a test, or their operation? All of those issues matter, and it partly matters because harm or distress can often be very visible in urgent and emergency care. We see it in ambulance delays, we see it in waits in A and E, but we're really conscious that people waiting on a waiting list, waiting to be called in for an appointment or for an assessment, some of that can be hidden or not visible to many people. Very visible to us, because we know who those people are, and that's why I'm really pleased we've got this opportunity today to both share the figures, but also share the work that we are doing on this topic. And as I started with, Chair, this topic goes alongside urgent and emergency care. When we're running hospitals across all of our sites, we are really conscious that some of those urgent care pressures can squeeze out on occasion our capacity to do some of this planned and elective care work. That's why you'll have seen mention in the papers about the work we're doing at Grantham around our elective hub, of trying to concentrate as much work as we can there, so that it's not directly impacted by urgent pressures, that we don't have to cancel people or move them from their allotted slot. So I'll stop at that point, and I'll hand over, Chair, if that's okay, to Michelle, just to take you through the highlights of the slide pack, not a line-by-line one. Michelle, over to you.
Thank you, Andrew, and morning, Chair, morning, colleagues. So I wasn't intending to go through every slide, but happy if there are any questions to offer you the answer. So Andrew's quite right, there is a national allegory target, but we always apply an ambition. So you will see that 78 weeks, nobody waiting more than 78 weeks for start of treatment, not necessarily completion of treatment, will be in place by the end of March. And just to put that into perspective, so we are working very closely with independent sector colleagues to increase that capacity for us. As you know, we've got a community diagnostic centre that is providing additional capacity, and we're about to embark on a community diagnostic centre in Boston again, which will support population more locally. So the position of where we are by the end of March is we will have no patient waiting for their outpatient or first treatment from a capacity point of view by the end of March. Obviously, it's a patient-centred service, so some of our patients are not, sorry, the wrong words, we are working with them to actually undertake and accept the offer. So we've currently got 68 patients who don't want to be treated by the end of March for very, very good personal reasons, and we're working with them to understand what we can do as a collective to make sure they are treated before the end of March, and that's a piece of work ongoing at the moment. So we are ahead of trajectory in terms of our treatment, we are absolutely maximising youth independent sector. Interestingly as well, we are working with other organisations, acute providers in the East Midlands, in what we call a mutual aid agreement, whereby where we've got some bigger issues in certain specialties and less so in other organisation, then we're actually working together to apply mutual aid, and again, it offers timeliness of management, treatment and ongoing plans for our patients. So that's where we are from a 78-week point of view. In tandem to that, we are now doing all of the modelling work around the second standard that's been agreed, which is no patient will be waiting more than 65 weeks for initial treatment by the end of March 2024. We are very comfortable and confident, again, in terms of that pre-existing partnership that we've got with independent sector, that we are progressing against the plan and the trajectory to achieve that. As Andrew said, the 52 weeks is actually by March 2025. We've put an ambition in place, and it is an ambition of having no more than 700 patients waiting over 52 weeks in parallel to the end of March 2024. Now, we know that a number of patients in a number of specialties have got a profile where we can offer that support to move them to below the 52-week bracket, and that's going to work in parallel. As you can imagine, it's an extensive piece of work with patient safety right at the heart of what we are doing, so we are trying to accommodate choice, but again, as Andrew said, we need to allow that extended wait time with whatever detriment that will cause the patient to wait longer. So again, it's very much a partnership arrangements that we've got with our patients. We are trying to do as much as we can care closer to home, so to make sure that we are equipped with a capacity that's local to where they are. Having said that, in order to expedite and add some more speed to the process, this is where we come back to Grantham as well, as we've designed the elective hub that goes with that. As you know, we've got brand-new theatres, the capacity at Grantham to provide the waiting list support of the wait times. It puts us in a really, really positive position to support our patients in a timely manner. I'll stop there and see whether or not there are any questions, queries or points of further information. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. And I've got my first question is councillor Chalmers.
Thank you, good morning. You mentioned, excuse me, patients not wanting treatment. Now, it was brought to my attention just recently, there's a patient out towards Skegness Sutterton Way who has been diagnosed with cancer and is basically on a long-term palliative care treatment schedule, so the idea is that they attack the cancer to enable the patient to live a longer and healthier life, but he's never going to recover. He's chosen not to have that treatment on the basis of the fact that it can't be administered at Skegness, and he doesn't have the funds to get him to a proper hospital to where the appointments are. Not everybody sits on that breadline where they get free transport, and people are making these decisions as to where to spend his money, the fact that it's going to take him a day, it's going to cost him £60 in a taxi to get there because he doesn't drive. And that's a really shocking position for somebody to say, I can't afford it, if I spend that money on this, I can't switch the heating on, because of the lack of facilities available or treatment available to him in his local area. In fact, I found it quite heartbreaking, really.
Thank you, Chair. Could I come back on that?
I mean, you're welcome to come back on it, but that might be something as a question, I think, that we can ask later on when we've got the non-emergency patient transport service in front of us, because they might be able to gap fill some of the reason behind that, and I think there are special exceptions normally, so, but I don't know if Andrew or if you wanted to pass any comment, I'm not sure you can, but...
I think Michelle was happy to jump in.
So we are doing an awful lot of work with all of our patients, but particularly our cancer patients. So we have a group, and we call it the Patient Engagement Group, to really understand what it is our patients need to access the services that they need, and transport is one of them. So we are working very closely in terms of making sure that those patients that live quite rural, whereby treatment is minimal in terms of its ability to be delivered and monitored, we're working with them to say, right, okay, if we can get you the transport, don't worry about the cost, your treatment is more important, and we know those patients, we know them very well, and there's some very personal dialogue that's occurring. So I hope the situation that you're describing certainly is supported by the work that we're now doing quite rigorously to make sure that if there are other treatment options, our patients can access them. Transport should not be a dis-enabler to allow that patient the treatment that they require.
Thank you. That is a massive relief to know, and I will certainly be going back to this person to make sure that they're aware of those facilities.
Thank you, councillor Chalmers. I've got councillor Allen.
Thank you, Chairman. Chairman, I've read this report with interest, because I was very keen at the original committee to see how we were actually progressing in terms of dealing with some of the issues that occurred in the NHS system, particularly in Lincolnshire during, as a consequence of COVID, and indeed during COVID. And I think I did mention my concerns about the 104% increase in productivity, I assume that could be, and how effective that's going to be reducing the overall waiting lists that are currently standing at over £7 million or something like that. So that's just an aside. A second thing through you, Chairman, I concentrated on the appendix, and it's very difficult to make sense of the appendix, because you can't scale up, the graphs are very small to start with in the appendix, and you can't scale them up. If you scale them up to actually see what it means, you lose the definition of the indexes across and up the thing, so it's very difficult to make sense of whatever it is. So you're consequently then left with looking at the lines that appear, and trying to assume then that you understand what that actually means, and can make some useful comments to our presenters. So could Simon look at that as a way of giving us the information that we actually need in some form, because it needs to be put together in a way that we can actually use it on our laptops? Otherwise, we're struggling, I think, to offer any form of scrutiny. It does seem to me that this paper concentrates on waiting lists of a particular type, you know, which is the 108, was it, which we don't have many of, and 78, and how we can reduce those to some degree, not, you know, in my view, to a significant amount, but it's a reduction, as opposed to where we are at the moment, which is more people going into the bigger number, the 78 weeks. The graphs that I was looking at are on page 25 of the papers, which I'm not totally sure what it is in terms of the appendix that they put together for us, but it's under section 1, and there's three graphs there that indicate that progress against planned progress, or actual progress against planned progress, is not going in the right direction. And the cancer one was particularly interesting in that if I saw that sort of graph, you know, in my work, you know, I would say the graphs are being put together to show that delivery will succeed. You know, you've got an April 23 date, so it must go down to April, it must go down to the requirement by then, but, you know, how you actually do that in practice strikes me as being quite remote with the situation that we've got, you know, with whatever it is, six weeks to go. So I would like some explanation about how the assumptions that these improvements are going to be actually achieved within the time that we got left available, which is not very long, is actually going to be done, because we've got plans, but as far as I can see, the plans at the moment, and they won't be coming into effect within the next six weeks, or if they are, it's only going to have a very small improvement on the situation that we are as of now.
I'll just cover the part about the charts before, obviously, either Andrew or Michelle comes in, but with any of the charts, if you've got an issue with it, I would always recommend that you drop Simon an email, I'm sure that he can then send you a copy which is easier to access. The great difficulty is now with not having paper copies, it isn't the simplest, we can just look on a screen often, so I think we can sort of help with that in future.
Thank you, Chairman. It may well help, but these graphs are very small, even on an A4 sheet of paper.
Noted. I'll hand over to Andrew.
Noted. I'll hand over to Andrew and Michelle.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, councillor Allen. So in terms of slide one, that was a point in time. So that was at the beginning of January, and that was a demonstration in terms of where we were at that point. And therefore, the work that has gone ahead to take us to the known position of no patients waiting from a capacity point of view by the end of March for outpatient and first treatment. And I described the cohort of patients that we're working with, which is sixty eight of those that we're actually trying to find the right fit for them to have their treatment. So we are very clear in terms of that trajectory to the thirty first of March twenty twenty three. And we do have patients having gone through. We started with just over three thousand patients waiting over seventy eight weeks. At the moment, just waiting for final plans, we've got about six hundred, and we have the capacity to do that. So this was a moment in time in terms of the graph that you saw, and you're quite right to question that in terms of how do we absolutely give confidence that those patients in that cohort will be seated, seen and will be treated. The same goes for the cancer graph that you saw, that was the position at the beginning of January. What we do from a cancer pathway point of view is I meet with all of the teams, both in terms of ULHT and partner organisations, three times a week to go through those patients in that over sixty two day backlog that you've seen, and we are seeing some significant reductions in that pathway now. And certainly, if I was to send out some more up-to-date information and demonstration in terms of where we are, that would give you more confidence that we are on a downward trajectory. We are seeing and treating more of our patients and successfully through those pathways. But as I say, just wanted to point out that those graphs that presented in front of you were a moment in time. I report this twice weekly to the executive team and also the divisions and I work very closely together to make sure the number that I see in front of me can be cross-referenced to a direct patient. I hope that helps.
Thank you, Chairman. Well, if it's been monitored as regularly as that, no doubt we'll be able to be shown that the situation has achieved what's been planned in six weeks' time. Could I ask my second question? I forgot to ask it. My second question is to do with the use of the private sector, because this was raised before in terms of wanting that is happening in Lincolnshire to actually reduce waiting lists. I think what was said at that time was it was the current NHS theatres, et cetera, that were being used at weekends within, by the private sector, which I found quite interesting. So it's not people, it's not, the question I've got is, is that what is being meant by the use of the private sector in Lincolnshire? Or is it a combination of that and maybe using private sector facilities? Because I would like to know, you know, what it is, how the private sector is being used to do it. Is it just using national health facilities at weekends? Which strikes me as a bit odd when perhaps the private sector's got its own facilities that could be used.
Michelle, do you want to give the detail?
Yeah. So again, thank you for that question. So we have facilities through the providers to come onto our sites so that our population don't have to travel. And so we do a combination, the majority of our facilities are used for NHS work. But where we do have services that don't usually run at the weekend, such as outpatient, we are making use of those facilities that are already set up to support patients through. That includes our endoscopy units as well as outpatient. From a theatre point of view, at the moment, we aren't using our theatre capacity via the independent sector. We do have a number of partners in the independent sector that have their own setup from a theatre point of view. But certainly from an outpatient point of view and diagnostics, we do utilise the capacity that would not normally be utilised at the weekend to support the patients coming through. Just going back to Grantham, the design of those new theatres is very much for our NHS workload to be done by NHS consultants, and they are known to the patients. So and we're currently working over five days, but we're now planning with the elective care hub to run those theatres from an NHS point of view, seven days a week. But we're just working through that, what that looks like. But certainly, yes, some NHS facility is there to support the private provider ability to access.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Parkin.
Thank you, Chair. I think whichever way we look at it, I don't think anybody, either in this room or you guys on the screen, are going to be happy with the current position and the situation that we're in. I think it's incredibly difficult for people to be waiting so long when they are in such pain, when access to primary care is so difficult, and when even things like accessing a basic medical medication review can be a battle. Because obviously, if we've got patients who are waiting this long, then they are most likely going to be on medication long term. And it just seems to me that the whole system is almost kind of working against them. And that is no disrespect to anybody on the screen or the people actually doing the job on the frontline, because they are working in what is a perfect storm, and it must be incredibly difficult. And I for one absolutely pay my respects to the fact that they are rocking up day in, day out and doing that, because it must be really, really thankless. But are we, who is then watching over these people? What other help do these people need while they are waiting long term for such, for treatment? And I say this from very recent personal experience where a relative of mine who doesn't live locally has had an inordinate amount of time and wait for a hernia operation. And the pain that they were in during that time was debilitating. So where's the support for the knock-on impact that this will be having for patient lives? And I'll be confident that if that is from primary care, that these people are able to access it.
Okay, I'll start with that one, Chair. I'll let Michelle join in on some of the details. So I think your opening comment about is anyone sort of satisfied or okay? Of course not, because waiting lists and waiting times across the NHS, across the country are much higher now than they were pre-pandemic. And as I think I said, we do absolutely understand, these are real, live people, other people's loved ones. We want to treat them as quickly and as safely as possible. We don't just sort of leave people on waiting lists. And I think some of the latest slides in the packet talk about some of the validation and some of the checks that take place, whether those are administrative checks or clinical checks to make sure that people are not coming to harm. Where people's condition, if they believe that is changing, yes, many people do go back to their GP and either get re-refered or additional information is sent through. And similarly, our own clinical colleagues do review their waiting lists and waiting times, make sure that people are prioritised in the right clinical order. It's not just about how long you've been on the waiting list. There's a very, very strong clinical prioritisation process about bringing in the most or the sickest cases before others. That's why you always need a backstop of a maximum waiting time so that people don't just keep getting bumped to the bottom of the list. So I think your point is well made and absolutely accepted. And I'll let Michelle add to that if she wants to. Thank you.
Thank you. So yes, just to add to that, so we have a combination of both. So there's something about assessing the patient's duration and time with us on the waiting list. And you've just described a patient on a surgical pathway. We have a technological support to understanding the priorities of our patients. And you'll see in that slide, it talks about priority clearance. And there are four priorities that a patient is graded against. And we have a clinical team that review those regularly to make sure that any sign of deterioration, any new referral from the GP, expediting care, is actually responded to. And that patient is in the right position on the waiting list to get the treatment and care that they need, and particularly around what you've just described. If their condition deteriorates, then that is escalated, and we have a clinical review that is undertaken for that. So a bit of administrative, but more clinical.
Okay, thank you. I've got councillor Loughhagen.
Thank you, Chair. I've got two questions. One is related to councillor Allen's question about private care. I'd like to know what proportion of the treatment to clear the waiting list is being done currently by private practitioners. And the other question was about, again, going back to the sixty eight people who are refusing treatment. And I know, I know those decisions that people are saying they don't want it now or can't access it. I know that people make their own decisions about that, but their decisions about whether they want to access treatment or can access treatment are very heavily influenced by advice they get from medical practitioners. So I think I want some reassurance that if somebody is saying, I don't want treatment or I don't want treatment now, they're not really being influenced either way because of the targets and the waiting list. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm just reading around in my paperwork here to see if I've got the private or the independent sector proportion. I haven't at the moment. Happy, Chair, to send that on if I could find it quickly enough. If I can't do it while we're talking, we can send it through to Simon Evans if that's okay. I mean, the vast majority of our work is, of course, NHS work, but I can't put a figure on that at the minute, or not an accurate one. In terms of those people who through choice are not accepting an offer that's made. I mean, we're really clear that we don't manipulate waiting lists. We don't sort of aim to hit the target and miss the point on this, because that would be an entirely wrong way of managing this. So we're really clear with people about making reasonable offers to people about their treatment, reasonable convenience for them. If they choose for a variety of reasons, and it's going to be hard to be too general about many different reasons why people choose not to accept a particular date, site or whatever. We will, of course, give them whatever advice we can, if it's within our gift, and they will go to their GP or other sources of advice as per their particular circumstances. So it's a great question, it's just not one I can really generalise on about many different reasons why people have particular preferences about times or dates, bearing in mind their domestic, social and work commitments. I don't know, Michelle, if you need to add to either of those. No. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I've got Liz.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Andrew and Michelle, for the presentation. From a Healthwatch perspective, we're all so keen about patients that have had operations cancelled. And I just wondered if there's any correlation or impact in terms of the waiting list and then the cancellations, because obviously that's lost capacity and it is a real concern that's both raised regionally and nationally from a Healthwatch perspective. Thank you.
Michelle, do you want to give the, and I might comment at the end?
Let's say thank you, Liz, for that question. So as we've just described, we have a category of patients, particularly those waiting for surgery. If we are in a position where we have to review the waiting list, we will only look at category four, which is the lowest component, absolutely means something dramatic for the patient. But in terms of causation of potential harm, we would only ever cancel the category fours. We wouldn't cancel threes, twos, and certainly the ones of the cancer patients. So that's not something that we do. So and more and more now, and certainly over the last six to eight months, we find it extremely concerning to go down the conversation of the cancellation of elective surgery. We don't cancel outpatient as a general rule. I think the only time I remember recently is when we had the unknowns of the ambulance strike and not knowing what that would mean in terms of patient presentation. But for all of those that we did cancel on that first ambulance strike, everybody was booked at a point of cancellation as well. So if we do face that, once we have to contact a patient, then they're immediately rebooked. The national standard is, as you know, is any cancelled op has to be rebooked within twenty eight days, and we do follow that standard. I don't know whether that answers your question, Liz.
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got councillor Smith.
Thank you, Chairman. And whilst it's, I've been, shall I say, partially reassured for some of the answers to previous questions, it's in our report, it's still, I have still an element of alarm, because on page twenty eight, it says, and I quote, P three and P four are considered non-urgent, but will be supported to return to increased function and ability to resume activities of living, end quote. If you are under that category, that is probably something like a hernia, or I'll use the example of my mother who had issues with the jaw. Okay, she didn't need surgery, but she needed an appointment. That was over a year. She's been in pain, constant pain for over a year. Now she could have gone, and it's all, I'm going to say, or go to the GP, they'll re-refer you. Good luck getting that, is all I'll say. We've been here before. They can re-refer you to the cows come home. If the capacity, A, if the capacity isn't there, the answer is still going to be the same, which is capacity's not there, sorry. And then trying to get to the GP for them to refer you is the first hurdle, which many who are ill simply don't have the energy to do. If you are unwell, even with a minor ailment, but a serious enough ailment to require elective intervention, you are probably too unwell to have the strength to go and fight the GP system to be re-refered. You take, it's a very British thing, oh, I've been referred, I have to sit and wait, because it's the nature of who we are as a people. And I'll end by saying, Chairman, certainly in Lincolnshire before Covid, our waiting lists were not stable, they were going up. Covid has obviously exacerbated that, and I understand the reasons why, but this is not a new problem. This problem has been around for a long, long time, and unfortunately, it hit a very, very bad time to exacerbate an already existing problem. And it begs the question, Chairman, with the amount of money that goes into the Health Service National, which is forty percent of our gross domestic product, what's happening with all of it?
Some big questions in there, Chair. I won't answer the final one, because I'm not sure I had to answer that one. But I think, councillor, what you make is a really important point of, as the accountable officer for the trust, I clearly don't want people to be waiting for treatment any longer than they absolutely have to. And would agree with what you say, this shouldn't be about relying on the sort of determination of an individual to sort of fight their way through the system, whether it's GP or the hospital bit, in order to get their treatment. We want to treat them as quickly as possible. We've got work we need to do on our own internal processes and productivity. We cannot get away from the fact that a lot of planned and elective work was stood down during the pandemic. And the position pre-pandemic was a lot better than it had been for some time, but is now much trickier. That's why we're not just trying to stick to those national targets, the ones at the end of twenty three, twenty four, twenty five. We absolutely want to get ahead of those. And actually, that's what my clinical colleagues want to do. They want to be at work doing all the procedures, outpatient diagnostics and operations. Patients want us to be doing that. Our commitment to you today is we will do everything we can within our gift to do that, within the resources that politicians give us. And for our part, when people give us resources, absolutely accept the point about we need to operate at best practice, at the sort of top end of the scale of productivity and efficiency. And we know we've got some work to do on that. That's why we've got a number of people who've been helping us to do that. And, you know, we'll always be happy to come back and tell you how we're getting on with some of that. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you for the answer. I mean, please don't take it that Thank you for the answer. I mean, please don't take it that it's a swipe in general. I know it's very difficult and it's not easy. And you have a very difficult situation to do and a very different, difficult thing to balance, which is clinical need. Because, as you've already alluded to, each individual isn't bothered about somebody else's clinical need. Unless it's, you know, a member of their family, it's human nature. Where, do you think you will likely get down to target before the national guidelines? Thank you.
I mean, I think it's Michelle said, and I think it's on one of the slides, I can't remember which page, page 29. Our ambition around the over 52-week waits, we're absolutely looking to get ahead of that by the end of March 24. So trying to get down to, I think the figure quoted was 700 by then. But it is an ongoing bit of work, this, that, you know, literally, we do look at waiting lists and waiting times every day, every week, whether that's us internally doing it, whether it's with our integrated care board colleagues or NHS England nationally, you know. If we think these slides are complicated, you should see some of the national and regional ones. So this is analysed every which way you can, not just because people want to present pretty pictures, but we are absolutely desperate to get every patient treated in the right clinical priority order, but as quickly as possible. So we'll hit the end of March 23, 78-week maximum. We will absolutely hit the end of March 24, 65-week. In between that time, we'll push on as far as we can with the 52-week waits, because we really accept 52 weeks as a year. I don't like waiting for anything else in my life for a year. I don't expect patients to have to wait for their healthcare for that length of time. But we are where we are. We will do what we can to bring those times forward, whether it's for operations, outpatient procedures, diagnostics, cancer, whatever. Thank you.
Just building on from councillor Smith's question then. What do you feel is the greatest challenge for achieving the 78-week clearance trajectory, which is due to be met in just over six weeks from now?
If I may, Andrew. So we've done a lot of planning, Chair, a lot of planning. We've spoken to a lot of patients. We've engaged with clinical experts that allow us to put the right capacity in on the right site to achieve the 78 weeks. So from a confidence level, from a capacity point of view, we are confident and those patients are being booked through. What we just need to do is focus on those patients that are really struggling to actually accept the offer, put forward to them. We want to make sure that we have zero patients waiting at the end of March. And we just need to understand how we help our patients that are not yet in that same place to either want to be treated before that day, or indeed getting the right fit and the right site for them. So we've done an awful lot of work. It's very practical as well as administrative. So we do test all of our capacity capability. And certainly from an outpatient point of view, not to go into too much detail, we also monitor the throughput on the clinic. So if we say we're in the clinic at 100%, and what's that look like? Then we make sure we're running the clinic at 100%. And everybody booked onto that clinic is seen and actually starts on their journey. So there's a lot of people, clinical and administrative, making sure that the plan that we've put forward is actually genuinely realising the benefit to the patient, and that is getting them seen by the end of March.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Lindorton.
Thank you, Chairman. Good morning, Andrew, Michelle. Thank you for your presentation. I'd just like to vouch for the fact that I am on a waiting list for a small piece of surgery. And I've been on that list since June 21. And I can honestly say that I have been phoned twice, once by admissions, I believe, and then by another gentleman. And I was given an appointment on one day, and I went to Grantham Hospital on the next day. And I saw a doctor, but sadly, this wasn't the person I was meant to see. I was meant to see a surgeon. And I have no complaints about that at all, because I was treated with the greatest respect. The doctor was very apologetic, and he also wrote to the person that I'm supposed to see. And I've since had confirmation of that. So I know that you are addressing the waiting list. Thank you, Andrew. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor. So it's always good to hear that some of the processes we think are in place and the way in which they're implemented as well are working. And I, I made the comment a moment ago about in the rest of my life, I don't expect to wait. And I think the NHS needs to be applying that same principle. I think wrapped up in this, and it may be not the point of today's paper, is also how we make our processes as slick as possible for those people who need an appointment or want to change an appointment. I still think the NHS in digital terms is way off the pace in terms of most people run their life on their phone. We're not always able to allow people to contact us and get things changed in the way that they would in every other bit of their life. So we're aware of that, on with that. And that's all part of, you know, slick, effective, productive processes. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got no further speakers, so I've just got one further question. Is there any more information you can share on the Community Diagnostic Centre for Boston? And if issues such as transport links have been considered when looking at a sign for this?
Thank you, Chair. So, so the work on the Diagnostic Centre for Boston is a work in progress. What we do consider is access to the population, not just that that's in Boston, although one of the reasons that, that the Diagnostic Centre went there was to provide our East Coast population the maximum access to a state-of-the-art facility similar to that based at Grantham. Certainly outside of here, we can share with you the time scale in terms of, of the process and when actually that capacity will be released and offered out to our patients.
That's great, thank you. In which case, I'm now going to move to the proposal. I'm going to propose we note the improvements and pace of delivery for patients of United Lincolnshire Hospital NHS Trust waiting more than 78 weeks, as per the direction of the Secretary of State for Health and Social Care, that we note the trust plan to eliminate waits for more than 65 weeks for elective care by March 2024, in line with the NHS 23, 24 priorities and operational planning guidance, and to welcome the actions as detailed in the report in support of the targets as outlined in one and two. I'd also like to request we have a further full update in 12 months and an interim update via the chairman's announcements in six weeks. So do I have a second after my proposal? Thank you, councillor White. All those in favour, please show. Thank you. That's supported unanimously. And I'd just like to thank Andrew and Michelle for your time. I know you're incredibly busy, so thank you for attending this morning. We'll now move on to...
You're welcome, Chair.
Thank you. We'll now move on to agenda item six, Director of Public Health's annual report. This item was circulated as part of the agenda pack, and you will find it at pages 35 to 57. For those unaware, Derek Ward has been the Director of Public Health for Greater Lincolnshire since February 2022. That is North Lincolnshire and North East Lincolnshire in addition to this county. This is his first annual report in that role, and I'd like to welcome our presenter, Lucy Gavens, Consultant in Public Health. I'll hand over to you to have a quick run through, and we'll take questions at the end. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chairman. So in 2021, the Chief Medical Officer highlighted the challenges of coastal communities in his annual report and identified some of the reasons for inequalities and set out a range of recommendations to improve them. One of the things that the Chief Medical Officer noted was the lack of available data published at a geographical level small enough to capture some of the challenges of coastal communities. And within that posed a challenge to, to, to around the country, really, to, to be able to better understand our local geographies, to plan national and local strategies. And so within the DPH report, that's what we have, have sought to done, is to analyse local data and identify different types of communities across Greater Lincolnshire. And we've identified four, four different types of community. Urban centres, urban industrial centres, coastal communities and rural and market towns. And I'll come on to talk a little bit about each of those. I'm just going to, I do have a couple of slides, and I'm just going to share my screen now, because I think it's helpful to, to be able to see on the maps. So hopefully that will perfect. Just waiting for the slide to move on. Ah, okay. In which case, if we could just pop on a couple of slides, that'd be great. Thank you. Just to the next one where we've got maps. So thanks, Katrina. So the maps highlight at that kind of high geographical level, where the different types of communities are that we're talking about. So we can see the strip down the coast, which is coastal communities. The two main towns that we see within coastal communities, Mabelthorpe and Skegness. Our urban centres are the red and orange blocks on the map. So particularly, obviously, Lincoln is one of our key urban centres, but also Grantham and Boston. And we've also mapped where those key urban centres are on the borders of Lincolnshire, because we do see quite a bit of travel, particularly commuters, but also kind of for leisure between, between those, those different urban centres as well. Our urban industrial centres are the purple, so they tend to be focused in North Lincolnshire and North East Lincolnshire, although Gainsborough is also an urban industrial centre based on its, on its heritage and its history. And then our rural and market towns, which are the greens, the green area on the map. So they are the four different types of community that we have identified. And we've used different characteristics of those communities to, to understand what makes up different areas. So things like building density, industrial makeup, proximity to coastline, and a range of other factors. If we could move on to the next slide, please. Thank you. So at a very high level, and I appreciate the text on here is quite small, this is highlighting our health outcomes. So three key areas, the top sort of third of the table is relating to illness and hospital admissions. Then we've got our mortality data, so deaths due to, for example, cancer, cardiovascular disease and liver disease. And then at the, at the bottom, we've got some indicators, some measures around access, particularly to general practice and to hospitals, as well as pharmacy. And at a glance, there's quite a stark message, I think, that comes from this table, that our coastal communities, in the vast majority of health outcomes, do fare significantly worse than the rest of Lincolnshire and the rest of the country. We see across the full range of morbidity, so that there's hospital admissions due to cancer, falls, cardiovascular disease, self-harm. Liver disease are all highest in our coastal communities. And similarly, we're also seeing that, that all age, that deaths across both all ages and in the under 75, so what we would call an early death, are also highest in that coastal community. The, the outcomes are significantly better than average in our rural and market towns. And to a degree, similar to average or slightly better than average in our urban centres. So places like Lincoln, Boston and Grantham. And we see outcomes slightly worse than, than average in, in our urban industrial places. When we look at access, it does change slightly. So we see that the rural and market town communities have the significantly worse access in terms of travel time, probably intuitively what we would expect. A lot of people are travelling further. But this is really important for us when we're thinking about how we design services, how we make sure that there is the right access to general practice, to hospitals and to pharmacy across our population to meet the needs of local populations. If we could just go to the next slide, please, Katrina. Okay. So I'm just going to talk very briefly through the different, the four different types of community. So our urban centre communities tend to be younger than average. They're made up of an economically active population and generally have lower, lower than average levels of deprivation, usually in, in good housing. They have good access to community and health services. But health outcomes are worse in certain domains, particularly cancer, cardiovascular disease and suicide. And reducing environmental challenges, so one of the key environmental challenges in our urban centre communities would be air pollution. And there's also poorer access to green space, higher density of things like fast food, fast food outlets, which we know can have a significant impact on the health and wellbeing of people living in our urban centre communities. If we go to the next slide, please. So then we have our urban industrial communities. So urban industrial communities, like our urban centres, also tend to be younger than average and have good access to services and support infrastructure. However, urban industrial communities are particularly challenged by historically embedded and quite extensive deprivation. There are fewer opportunities for higher education in urban industrial centres, and the economy is predominantly focused on heavy industry and sort of plant and process occupation. So that kind of influences some of the opportunities available in terms of, of work as well. And we know that this contributes to prevent, preventable ill health and to early death. There are some important opportunities on the horizon for some of our urban industrial communities. And it's really important that we work together across sectors to make sure that we're making the most of those inward investment opportunities for, for particular challenges around education and employment, so that, so that we can really make the most of, of that inward investment. If I could just go to the next slide, please. So then our coastal communities. Our coastal communities are, have a number of challenges. We have aging populations and pockets of considerable deprivation. As a result of, of that kind of combination, on average, local people have much more complex health needs and care needs than the wider Greater Lincolnshire population. And meeting those more complex needs is challenged by the geographical isolation of our coastal communities. Many of the factors that contribute to poorer health are, are related to the wider kind of social determinants of health as well. So it's really important that we're thinking about opportunity to education, employment, housing, and kind of the wider living environment, as well as access to health and care services to improve the, the health and the wellbeing of, of people living in coastal communities. And so that makes working collaboratively across partners particularly important. There are some specific opportunities in coastal communities, so for example, the Campus for Future Living in Mabelthorpe, that hopefully if we work together to deliver and consider kind of health and wellbeing in the round, should bring significant benefits to kind of socio-economic circumstances and the health and wellbeing of coastal community residents. And then the next slide, please. So our final, the final of the four different kind of communities is our rural and market town communities. So these communities tend to be made up of an older, middle-aged and aging population. It's highly dispersed across, across large spaces, as, as you would expect, particularly for rural communities. These communities tend to be more affluent, but there are pockets of significant rural deprivation. And there are some specific challenges, for example, linked to energy inefficient properties, kind of, and the challenges around fuel and fuel poverty. And access to health and community services, as I mentioned, when the kind of big overarching table was up, is also poorer than average. But having said that, the health is generally better. So if we're thinking about making sure services are most accessible to people that have the greatest need, then that's perhaps kind of what we would expect within our rural populations, where the health, health is generally better. And there, but there are some specific opportunities to improve the health and wellbeing of the local population. For example, through some government schemes around land management and digital infrastructure, and through thinking collectively about how we adapt services to increase, increase and improve outreach into isolated communities. So if I could just flip to the last slide, Katrina. So we, within the report, we've got six recommendations, and I'll just run through these quickly before opening for questions. So the first is around improving awareness of the diversity of Greater Lincolnshire's communities. We've been talking for, for a long time about kind of the challenges of our coastal communities. We've been talking for a long time about kind of the challenges of our coastal communities, but actually, there are real nuances between different communities in Greater Lincolnshire, and making sure that we understand those differences and what that means for health and wellbeing across the communities and across the workforce in our volunteer communities as well is really important. We need to work collectively with colleagues across the integrated care system to embed that recognition of the differences and make sure that we are responding at as local a level as possible to make sure that we are tailoring approaches and not trying to apply a one-size-fits-all, given the diversity of our population and their experiences. I think there are further opportunities to explore building greater intelligence around Greater Lincolnshire's diverse communities, and building that within the population health management data set, so that we can make sure this is linked really closely to data on outcomes and access, so that we've got that deeper understanding still. There is also something, I think, about supporting our local communities to know and to act upon some of the benefits that are within their communities, including sort of natural and artificial assets, things like green and blue space and the benefits of getting out in green and blue space can have for physical and mental health and wellbeing. We do also need to make sure that we've got really good awareness across the health and social care system of the significant inward investment that's got the potential to improve health and wellbeing, and understand collectively how we need to be shaping those to make sure we're making the most of opportunities for education, for employment and for health and wellbeing. And then finally, just we need to be innovative in designing and delivering a health and care workforce to meet the needs of Greater Lincolnshire, including kind of working with and co-producing with communities who may be looking for increased flexibility. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got councillor Wooton first.
Thank you very much, Stephen. Mr Chairman, I was interested to read in your report, take it on page, where is it, 10, regarding the urban increase in diseases, particularly from people living in that region there, and also the increase in air pollution. Would you support a call for air pollution reduction in town centres, particularly for taxis and buses, to reduce that particularly, on the 607 road that goes in the Grantham, 15,000 vehicles a day go down that road, and quite regularly at peak times, they're sitting there for half an hour with terrace houses on that street? Would you call for a reduction or support a call for a reduction in local air quality in that area? Thank you, chairman.
Yeah, we know that there's a good evidence based on links between air pollution, particularly particulates and some of the gases that are released from vehicles, and there's a good evidence based on the risk to human health that those pose. I think it's really important that we work to understand the extent to which, what the levels of those pollutants are in the local areas, and then work collaboratively to do what we can to reduce those levels of pollution, so that people, you know, kind of commuting, walking, cycling, et cetera, have as cleaner air as possible to breathe as they're going about their daily lives.
Councillor Allen.
Thank you, chairman. I wasn't expecting to hear comments about ELZs in this council chamber, but that's not my question. My question is a more general one about the report and what goes into it and how it's used. I did think that one thing that seemed to be missing from it, and it's not criticism of this particular report, maybe something for the future, is dentistry as a specific provision of public health or National Health Service. I need to be very careful what I say when I say it's a particular provision of the National Health Service. The issue is that it's not a particular provision of the National Health Service, and I think certain parts of our community suffer as a consequence of it, and it may well be something that's important to public health generally, and particularly if we can indicate perhaps where the particular problems are. And the second question is, and it's to do with your recommendations, is to, excuse me, understand how the report is used in terms of reflecting the inherent comments that you make and the information that you've got about public health generally in the community, and how that's then taken into account by both the primary elements of national health and the secondary ones even, in terms of trying to reflect how they provide their services in a way that reflects the inherent, you know, situation that you've got in the community. Because I do wonder whether, you know, the NHS look at what you're showing them and then say, well, you need to do this, or whether the NHS simply looks at people coming through the doors and says, you know, there seems to be a bit of an issue there, which may well be indicative of the issue as a whole, but may not be, you know, they may well be misled in terms of what they see. So I just wondered whether there is a good link between what you're saying, what you're finding and what their plans may be. I suppose the issue is perhaps that that might be a future NHS system service when we're looking at prevention, shall we say, of health issues, as opposed to the very reactive one that we've got at the moment, which almost waits for people to die before they actually do anything about it.
Thank you. I'll probably answer those questions in reverse order, so just thinking about how we use this to make sure that we're influencing health and care outcomes. There are a couple of different ways in which we would approach that. So one is that Derek is absolutely taking this at a strategic level to the places that need to be engaging in the conversation and understanding what this means in practice. So he has been to the Health and Wellbeing Board, he's having a conversation with Better Lives Lincolnshire executive team, so making sure that at a strategic level, colleagues across the integrated care system are aware of the findings and can start to think about what that means in terms of how we shape things differently for Lincolnshire. But then there's also how we work at a much more local level, so for example, with our primary care networks, to understand for them, obviously, they operate in smaller geographies that will overlap to a large degree with at least two of these communities, if not more, and working with them and colleagues in PCNs who are very much working with people in local communities to make sure that they really understand some of the challenges, particularly across the wider determinants of health, so that we can switch our focus to much more of a support around prevention than tackling health, ill health, as and when it arises. So there's a bit of a dual approach, if you like, in terms of how we use that. And we will be, which is in the process of developing a more kind of specific action plan, if you like, that follows on from the recommendations, to make sure that for each of those recommendations, we have got some specific actions that are in progress. And then just around the oral health and how oral health fits in this, I think there's a really, this has been timed relatively well in that the Integrated Care Board at the moment has been developing a dental strategy. There is a lot of work, I would say, I think colleagues across the NHS, there's a real focus on oral health and how we can improve access and outcomes across Lincolnshire. But I think this is a much broader challenge for the whole Integrated Care Boards and the whole Integrated Care System around workforce and workforce challenges.
Before I bring you in, I just want to build on your first question, if I may. So have you had any feedback directly from the NHS in Lincolnshire on this report and its recommendations?
Not yet, no.
I'm sure you'll pursue that. The issue about dentistry came from a presentation that we had after our last meeting about the Integrated Care Boards and how they're going to integrate dentistry, eyes and pharmacy, I think it was. Although I'm not totally sure how you can integrate a care service that doesn't actually exist in great parts of our own community, so there is an issue there, that's why I raised it. You know, there seems to be significant inequalities in terms of the services being provided, and we ought to highlight that because it's particularly bad on the east coast, not particularly good anywhere in the county, but it's particularly bad on the east coast, and, you know, perhaps you can do something to actually highlight that and try and bring attention to it. Although I did bear in mind you answered the question that the chairman asked.
Yeah, I'll just come back briefly. So Derek will be taking this to the next Better Lives Lincolnshire executive team as a starting point for the conversation. But I think there are conversations to have with a number of strategic groups across the Integrated Care Board, also for mental health and wellbeing, for the MHLDA as well as oral health and other domains of health as well.
Thank you, Lisa, and I'm sure you'll be quite well placed with the dentistry side of things, with your husband being a dentist, so should help. I've got councillor Smith next.
Thank you, chairman. One thing I noticed in the report before I get to my question is it tells us what the problems in these areas are, but it doesn't say why they exist. So if you'll permit me, chairman, to my mind at least, the reason in terms of, say, our industrial urban centres have the issues they have is because the heavy industries that were key employment drivers haven't either been sustained to the level that they were at, like Scunthorpe, say, because yes, the steelworks is there, but it's much reduced to what it used to be, or they have been dissolved completely and nothing has replaced them. As you'll know, chairman, Gainsborough used to be quite a hub for defence procurement many, many, many moons ago and other industries. It now doesn't have the heavy industry presence it used to have, which again is part of the problems for the area and why it suffers with what it suffers with. And I think until those areas start to get that industrial base back, they will always have those issues. Because if something similar replaced what had been lost, then those people who were employed would have had something to walk into. They don't. And contrary to what many may believe, I actually see net zero as a potential further harm to these areas than any health, because I think, based on things I've seen over the last few years, net zero is great for the home because that's where it sits, but when it comes to Lincolnshire, I think we're a bit of poor relation on that score and it will actually harm our industrial areas. Additionally, chairman, it mentions drug overdose, and one of the issues that causes that is past traumas that haven't been dealt with either by the individual or they haven't had the support they need to deal with that. And I know we've been dealing with that elsewhere, but I've had the misfortune of seeing the end of results without someone I tried to help, and it is truly traumatic for those that are concerned, and it's not a problem that's going to go away anytime soon. In fact, it may get worse if things aren't done. Lastly, chairman, with respect to rural areas, the biggest challenge I think rural areas face, and I can say is living in one, is there, especially in health, there is a total lack of understanding that actually, where I live, just outside Market Raisin, we don't have decent internet. It's like having dial-up, it's like snail mail. So when they say, oh, do this on Zoom or do this or have this meeting on Zoom, yeah, that's great if your internet's decent and works regularly and doesn't have problems. You know, my mobile phone signal, if you want a mobile phone signal from my house, you have to be in my bedroom because it's the only place that gets one. So it's things like that, and without that being addressed, which I know we can't do standalone, but without things like that being addressed, you will have social isolation because if you become infirm when you're elderly, how would you communicate, especially my generation as we age, how would we communicate? We would communicate through digital means, but if you've not got the infrastructure there, you will become isolated, you will become sealed off in your own little world. So, chairman, I think the biggest, and that is the same with health, health is the same thing, because as has already been alluded to, we're sparsely populated, the infrastructure isn't there. So again, if you don't drive, the public transport's not there, your health inequality's lessened, and you get the attitude of, oh, it'll take so much effort and stress to actually get this appo. Is my leg falling off? Am I dying? No, not really, I'm in a bit of pain, I'll leave it, but then it deteriorates and gets worse, and then you need an emergency appointment to go and see somebody. So until those, I think those areas are addressed, chairman, in respect to industrial urban centres and rural centres, you're always going to have these problems. Now, I haven't got the answers for every single one of those problems, but I think we need to have, in that report, there needs to be the why of, this is why we are where we are. We know what the problems are already, but there's no why they happened. If you don't know the why, you can't work out how to fix it.
Thank you, councillor Smith. Yeah, so we've got an annex to the report that we haven't published yet, but where we did dig in quite a lot of detail into the history of some of our different communities, and that helps us to understand some of the challenges around the urban industrial centres, for example, and their history of particular industries that have not necessarily, or that haven't been replaced by alternative employment opportunities, and also, for example, looks at the history of how our coastal towns developed and how they developed differently between kind of Cleethorpes, Mablethorpes, Skegness. So we have some of that why in sort of the behind the headlines, if you like, space. And I think it is really important that, for example, around the digital challenge and some of the other challenges that do underpin why we see such different health outcomes, that that is something that we really emphasise as we take the conversation forward with colleagues across the health and care system, so that we can really make sure that those challenges around, for example, digital infrastructure are really, really well understood and that we're thinking innovatively about how we manage that in a world where we are moving towards more digital provision of care.
Thank you. I think the other side I would add to it as well, councillor Smith, is I think that this tries to be more of a public document, so putting in probably too much context can often be off-putting, though for those that want to know further background, absolutely, you know, it's good to have that there, but yeah, I just think that's something to bear in mind. Councillor Chalmers.
Thank you. I absolutely love this document. I think it's wonderfully written, easy to read and really has got to the root of a lot of issues potentially. I also love what councillor Smith just said about internet access and phone access, which is the bane of my life as a competent adult. But what we haven't looked at is things like coastal community. People aren't born old in those places, they have an amazing time throughout their career, probably living in the likes of Lincoln or Boston, and then go, oh, I love Skegness, I'm going to move out that way and retire. So I really hope you're using this information very wisely with the recruitment team, because if you're looking for dentists or doctors or nurses, and you can say, we've got a really heavy elderly population that live out there, so you'll be faced with all these specialisms in geriatric care, which you can then go on and continue to specialise, plus you get the opportunity to live as they do and had to work really hard and then retire right next to the seaside. So there's loads of ways that you could use this information positively. I would like to know how you're using this information positively, please. And have you already used this information with other teams and got a positive outcome? Thank you.
So we haven't used it yet because it's just going through the final stages of kind of governance in the three authorities, but we have plans around, particularly around that workforce piece and how we can make sure that we are sharing. So coming back to the dentistry question, there is, colleagues in NHS England at the moment have a golden hello scheme that's active for dentists to come into Lincolnshire, and part of the conversation about what it's like here has been fed from our understanding that we've gleaned from this report. So some of those conversations that are happening in that specific area is one example, but there's a much bigger piece for us to do here. So you're absolutely right, things like, so for colleagues who are perhaps geriatricians or interested in care of the elderly, there are real opportunities to grow those specialisms within our local communities in a way that is a bit different and should be really attractive for people who are interested in those areas of work. So I think there is more we can do, absolutely, we need to be taking this to the people board at the ICB, and also having conversations with, again, colleagues who are working in those communities, so in Primackeno, for example, to make sure that that is not just kind of an understanding that's held at a strategic level, but that is really held within our workforce on the ground as well.
A lot of these things are often perceived as bad things, and actually, we need to be really mindful how we word it, we should just be wording it as fact, in a high geriatric population. That's often quite a safe population because they don't go around beating each other up because they've drunk too much at the weekend. There are ways of looking at all of this information in a positive way, and I think very much how it is written in the paperwork should just be that fact, not swaying information. But thank you.
Thank you. I've got councillor White.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to congratulate you on the quality of the report. It's informative, interesting and well presented, and I note the impact of educational disparities. It's informative, interesting and well presented. And I note the impact of educational disparities on health and wellbeing throughout the county. When Derek Ward first came to the county, he came to West Lindsay, and I remember him speaking about the main problem, health problems for adults in Lincolnshire was obesity and diabetes. And I still don't think that enough action is being taken to tackle these. And therefore, though the report is interesting, I I'm just concerned about what action it's going to lead, for example, in the community, because I know that the medical centres are not going to be able to deal with some of these problems. And I I know residents who've been told to lose weight for operations such as a knee operation have been able to do it and haven't found the sufficient support for them to do so. So my concern is that somebody will look at these findings and that it will lead to action in the community, an action that actually really tackles the health problems. Because you talk about exercise, et cetera. Well, exercise won't solve some of these weight problems, which will then lead to diabetes and affect the quality of life of the residents and lead to poorer quality of life and cost to the health service.
Yeah, thank you, councillor White, for your comments on the the report. There is, so absolutely, if we're thinking about obesity and diabetes, and actually, we can, I think we can apply the learning that we have across our, from our different, about our different communities, to each of the different kind of key health outcomes and some of the the drivers of those health outcomes across across Lincolnshire. But if we think about obesity and diabetes, obviously, obesity is driven by a balance between kind of physical activity and how active we are, and then and then our diet, kind of what what we eat. And there are, there are lots of natural assets across Lincolnshire that can support with things like physical activity. So getting out in green and blue space, which I've already talked a little bit about. But also, I think there is, there's a really important conversation for us to be having here with our communities and with the community voluntary sector off the back of this report as well. So we work closely already with organisations like Active Lincolnshire for, in terms of increasing physical activity, sometimes that can be something as as small as getting out for a walk in your local community. And I think making sure that we are advertising local assets and opportunities to be a bit more active across Lincolnshire is really important. We do also have support like One Year Lincolnshire, which which can support with physical activity and with diet. And there are also a range of other kind of independent providers out there who will provide support around around diet as well. But I do take your point that it is, it's a real challenge in terms of the the rates of obesity across Lincolnshire. We do have, you know, we do have high rates of overweight and obesity nationally, it's it's around two thirds of the population as well as locally in Lincolnshire. So it is a challenge that we need to address kind of communally with our population, with the community voluntary sector and with some of the statutory provision that we can provide.
I'd just like to say that you're extending medical practices so that physiotherapists, et cetera. I always thought a dietitian or access to a dietitian would be a good idea. And that in the future, medical centres, if you're thinking of building them, you have access to other facilities such as near where they can do some physical activity, et cetera. Think of the whole concept of health and wellbeing, not just the medical centre.
Yeah, absolutely. So so pulling together a range of, I guess, opportunities to support health and wellbeing that are not necessarily medical, but also include diet, physical activity, and and other support that people might need. I mean, one of the other advantages of of centres and pulling these together is it can often be a hub for people to to go to to try and tackle social isolation, for example, to help people feel more connected to to their communities. And also, if if things are in one space, then it's much easier for people to hear about other opportunities, other things that are available to support them. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Cleaver.
Thank you. And I would echo the remarks of my colleagues as to the quality of the report and how easy it is to read. And it's really good to see something that's so holistic and and is is taking all of the data available from the indices of multiple deprivation and all of the factors. I would ask you for a little further information explanation, though. I have to say, I'm a little bit confused at the different classifications in figure one compared to figure two, page five and page six. So on the figure one on page five, we have Stamfordborn, Spalding, Sleaford and Louth appearing as rural and market town. And on page six, figure two, they all appear in red as urban centres, which I find slightly confusing. Similarly, the fact that on figure two, your key shows four colours, but the map has five, which doesn't quite look right. I'm not quite clear what the lightest coloured areas on figure two actually are. Because obviously, the the deeper green would appear to be rural and market town. So I'd like, I'd appreciate some some clarity on on that one. Also, on the figures, the introduction to each of the four, you give population figures, 325,000 for urban, 253,000 for urban industrial, 29,000, which I'm surprised how low that is, 29,000 for coastal, and 311,000 for rural, rural and small towns. That only adds up to 918,000, which is way short of your 1.1 million. So again, a question as to what the figures should be for those. In terms of, obviously, as I've said at the beginning, the these, this level of detail and this breakdown, and particularly referencing of of all the different elements of multiple deprivation is really interesting. This committee, obviously, is Health Committee for Lincolnshire, it's not a County Council Committee, and there are representatives from all the districts. I'm also a district councillor, and I think many other people on the committee are as well. I know they are. It would be tremendously interesting and helpful to have your source of data aggregated up at district level for those of us who serve on districts, and for us to share with our district colleagues, because it it saves duplication of effort. You know, we're all sourced money these days. So if I were to go along to Grantham and ask SKDC to do a similar job, they would probably say it was going to be really difficult, we would find that difficult to do. You've already done most of it. So if if we can have that sharing, that would be really good. And within that, dare I be a little bit demanding, and say, if within each district, you could show the separate figures for each of the urban urban centres separately, I think that would be really, really helpful for us in terms of our planning and and perhaps some decisions on how we spend our levelling up money and things like that. That would be helpful. Also, just to touch slightly on on what councillor Chalmers said, the question of age-related illness and age-related ill health or or poor health. In terms of public health, I guess it's interesting to know how many of the difficulties that we face in terms of public health lifestyle actually exist among people who've moved into the area later in life. So what I'm saying is that the the problem that you might have with older people in coastal communities relates to them having a poor lifestyle before they moved into Lincolnshire even. And we're seeing the result of something that actually happened elsewhere, over which we had no control and can now have no control, which begs the question, do we actually, are we able to research medical records to that extent that we can we can see that, obviously anonymously? Be very interesting activity if we could. In terms also, sorry to do so many different things.
Councillor Cleaver, you're sort of, it's dragging on somewhat. That's not meant disrespectfully, but it's a lot for Lucy to try and get absolutely everything down there, I think, and to respond to you, so.
Sorry, Lucy.
Sorry, Lucy, your microphone's gone off. Sorry, turn it back off. The quickest answer, the quickest one to answer is the district level data. Yes, absolutely, we can produce something at a district level. And we can break it down by the four communities where those communities exist within the different districts. And so we will, we will pull something together and share it via Simon. The migration question's really interesting, and you've got me thinking now. Because historically, kind of up to this point in time, if someone moves into the county, we generally don't know what's what their path has been unless we go out and and ask them about it specifically, which we we don't do very often. We might do it for specific projects. However, I'm just wondering what opportunities there might be within the future with population health management to better understand some of, at least the recent history of people who migrate into Lincolnshire. So that's something I will take away as a question, something to think about, if that's okay. But certainly, I mean, it would be very, very helpful to know some of that background. Obviously, we don't, we don't have control over what's happened in someone's past. But what it might help us to do potentially is to support people moving into the county and understand what at the point that they move in, for example, is there something we we should be thinking about doing across the health and care system to support them and make sure that they're in the fittest health, in the best health they can be at that point in time and for moving forwards. And then your questions around the maps are slightly, the maps and the and the total numbers are slightly related. So we've done this analysis based on small geography, so roughly 650, small, small geographies that each one has roughly 650 households in it. There is some blurring around the boundaries. So if you look at figure two, where we've got the the deep colours, so the red and the purple and the blue and the green, that's where those neighbourhoods, those local areas quite clearly fit into one of the four categories. The grey area, it's where it's not so clear cut. So for example, around Lincoln, there is a a place, a geography around that surrounds Lincoln, where some of the characteristics are urban centre, but some of them may well be rural. And so to avoid blurring, what we've done is we've analysed those geographies which are more clear-cut in terms of the characteristics of those populations. We haven't kind of described that detail in the report, but again, we've got a bit of a technical background to it that we we can make available. That's why there are the grey areas on that map, too. So that five, that fifth colour, if you like, is is sort of the the unclassified hinterland. And that's also why the numbers don't add up to the total population of Greater Lincolnshire, because there are a couple of hundred thousand people who live in those geographies. What we're doing with that practically, though, is going, okay, well, one of the things that's really important is to understand we've got these four types of community, but not everyone will neatly fit into one classification or another. So so if you take Cleethorpes, for example, in north-east Lincolnshire, locally, it's considered to be a coastal community. But if you look at our analysis actually, because it's so close to Grimsby, it actually falls under that urban category. It's got some of the strengths of of coastal communities and some of the strengths of being urban industrial. So so what we're doing practically with those kind of borderland areas, if you like, is just being sensible and looking at the data in more detail to understand what that means.
Councillor Cleaver, has that sort of everything covered? Because even I was starting to lose track with it, and I can only commend Lucy on how well she covered all that, in fairness.
Yes, thank, I was about to say thank you for that. Am I allowed to ask any more questions? Thank you.
Very quickly, though, because I've got two other speakers, so.
Yeah, thank you. I was very, very pleased to see in, on page 11, bottom right, that there should be consistent and concerted use of health impact assessments for new developments. And that's music to my ears, I have to say. I just wondered why that doesn't apply across the board? Why does it only apply to urban centres and not to any other, to the urban industrial centres and to the small towns as well, where they have so-called sustainable urban extensions?
Yeah, we should apply that across all of the different centres. We'll make sure that we take that forward.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor Cleaver. Councillor Parkin.
I hope those who were at the last adult scrutiny committee forgive me for a bit of a bit of a rehash here. Very interesting document, and I, you know, I liked it then as much as I do now. I agree with you, councillor Cleaver, about the need for it to be get down to district level. But also, adults, I was talking about the need for, the information on their communities is also really, really key for parish councils. I sometimes think at parish and town level, we talk a lot about potholes and bins and all the rest of it, and all of that is very important, but often not enough about people. And I actually think if we can, those of us who are twin-hatted, work on how districts can get key headline information into parishes and town councils, that would really help, really, really help. Now, going back with my parochial hat on, to Louth and the market towns, the point I raised at adults, and Derek did accept it, but I'm going to mention it here for the belts and braces approach, was that we talk about the relative affluence of the market towns, and that is generally correct. But in pockets of each of those towns, we have intense areas of deprivation and poverty that rival the coastal towns, but on a smaller scale. So my point then was how do we make sure that the strategies we then put in place from this document into the coastal towns can then be replicated in those smaller communities, where there's smaller numbers, but the deprivation is as intense. So it's just making sure that we transfer the lessons learned across where we have pretty much the same but different, if you get what I mean.
Yeah, absolutely. I'd note that and and kind of follow up with Derek, following adult scrutiny. I think it is one of, one of the things that is really interesting when we dig down into the data is to be able to identify what the particular challenges are. Because, as you say, you know, we we think of our kind of rural market towns as being fairly affluent, but there are absolutely challenges there. And they're different challenge, often different challenges that perhaps can can get overlooked. So making sure we understand that is important.
Thank you. Colin Matthews, I've got next.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for indulging me. What an excellent discussion this has been. Two things. First off, in terms of the number anomalies, along the east coast, in addition to the vulnerable communities that have been named, we have a very, very large number of temporary accommodations, static caravans, lodges. That that a portion of those are abused by the people who live in them as permanent residents. Now, with 100,000 static caravans, it doesn't take much abuse to get to a very large number of of untracked individuals. So that was just a point of information, really. The second one, though, which is more important, that these are excellent recommendations. And I wonder if this committee might like to propose that Lincolnshire County Council, if it happened to have any money kicking around, might be able to respond directly to recommendation four, because that would have benefit for the whole of the Lincolnshire population that we created.
Councillor Matthews, you seem to be having problems with broadband, which is, and we've lost you. I think we got the gist of what he was saying, though, vaguely. Hopefully, he might come back on. But if you want to try and cover what you can there.
Yes, I think that's an important point around recommendation four. And I think this actually perhaps also links to the comment that councillor Parkin made around parish councils, because I think there is, there is something about how we make sure that we are really selling the assets of our local communities to local people and getting as close to our communities as possible to share that that information. So we will think creatively within our our planning off the back of this to make sure that we are getting the the message out and supporting health and wellbeing as much as much as possible across different communities. And just, I suppose, just to note councillor Matthews' comment around temporary accommodation caravans down the east coast, we do absolutely know that we've got a large population living in what would classically be temporary accommodation. It's a really vulnerable population with specific, complex health and care needs. Some of that might link back to the conversation we've had about people migrating into Lincolnshire in older age and understanding what's what their kind of past life has been like. So I think as much as we can do to understand that population and make sure that their health and wellbeing is is well supported alongside the rest of the community is really important.
Thank you. I've just got one question, and then I've got one- Thank you. I've just got one question, and then I've got one from Councillor White. So is there a system in place to monitor progress with the six recommendations on page 33 of your report?
So what we tend to do is develop an action plan off the back of recommendations. And then in the next annual report, we update on action that's taken place over the last year. In practice, it's really about nine months, because we tend to produce the report towards the end of the year, but that's the process.
Okay, and Councillor White?
I'd just like to say that I report back regularly to the parish council and to the village. I write reports in Netteland Matters, which goes to our 2,000 people in Netteland. I frequently give the link to this committee, so tell them how they can access it, tell them how to watch council meetings, and refer them to key points that have been made in the committees, not the whole agenda, but key things. And I think probably other district councils do the same.
That's brilliant. Thank you.
Thank you. And before I move to the recommendation, I will pick up on what Councillor Matthews was saying about trying to push forwards item four. And I know he was on about pots of money, but I think it's probably best as an interim that I have a conversation with the chairman of the Health and Wellbeing Board and see from that point of view, what can be taken forwards, perhaps to an exec. So I will ensure that that can move forward. So I'm going to propose that we note the report and look forwards to actions in response to the director's six recommendations on page 33 of his report. Do I have a second for that proposal, please? Thank you. All those in favour, please show. Thank you. That's supported. And thank you, Lucy, for your attendance. We'll now move on to agenda item seven, non-emergency patient transport. This item was circulated as part of the agenda pack and can be found on pages 5964. This is the first full report for the committee on non-emergency patient transport since October 2020. There are three parts to this item, the performance of the existing contractor, HTG, preparations for the new contract from the 1st of July, and changes to the national eligibility criteria for non-emergency patient transport. I'd now like to welcome our presenters, Via Teams, Tim Fowler, Associate Director of Contracting and Performance for NHS Lincolnshire's Integrated Care Board, Will Legg, Director of Strategy and Transformation for the East Midlands Ambulance Service, Joy Weldon, Head of Non-Emergency Patient Transport for East Midlands Ambulance Service. So I'll hand over to you just to quickly run through the paper and we'll take questions at the end. Thank you.
So thank you, Chair. It's good to be back at the committee to give the update on non-emergency patient transport. As you say, it's been a while since the last full report was here. I think, as you've noted, since then, TASSL, Thames Ambulance Service, have changed their name to Health Transportation Group, HTG. And as I go through, I'll refer to them as HTG. We've also had an update on eligibility criteria, which came out, and I'll run through that. And then, as I think people will know, we've awarded a new contract to EMAS to take on patient transport, which starts on 1st of July 23. And I'm joined by Joy, colleague from EMAS, if there are any questions about that, but I will give a brief update. And Will Legg from EMAS will also be joining. I think he's just held up in another meeting, so we're slightly earlier than we expected to be for this item, but that's fine. I'll just run through in the order that you gave, Chair. So I'll do the performance with HTG first. We'll then go into preparations for the EMAS contract, and then we can refer to the eligibility criteria if that works for the committee. In terms of HTG, the KPI report, the usual KPI report that we bring to the committee or have brought to the committee over the years is attached. I think it's fair to say that activity and performance has been stable over the last couple of years. I've put in the report that HTG have recently struggled with their performance on call handling. And I've referenced in the report that that's due to difficulties in recruitment and retention of staff. I think it's fair to say that there is quite significant competition in the area for call handling staff. And we may come on to that when we pick up the discussion around EMAS preparations. But other than that, I think, as I say, performance has been stable. What we're also seeing over the last couple of years with HTG is that their responsiveness to issues of patient transport within Lincolnshire has increased and improved. And we've now got a much better working relationship with HTG. I think part of that is due to changes in personnel at HTG, but we've got a much better working relationship with them. And they are very willing to work with us and with the hospital community and the community hospital community to sort out issues. I was dealing with an issue last week where we'd got a patient who needed moving, moving out of their house into a hospice, and HTG were really supportive of that. They put four crew members in to support that movement. And that was really, really helpful. And that's just an illustration of the kind of the change in relationship that we've had. I've put in the report the no concerns on the quality metrics for HTG. And I think over the next, what's basically four and a half months that the contract is left to run, I don't see any significant changes in the performance that HTG are exhibiting. If I move on to preparations with EMAS, I think preparations are going really well. We have a significant project structure in place with EMAS, and also a joint project structure in place with EMAS and HTG. So as well as managing the introduction of EMAS into the contract in July, we're also managing the exit of HTG. And I think, I'm sure Joy will probably comment, but HTG and EMAS are working really well together. So that's really positive. We in the ICB have regular conversations with EMAS. We've got, say, that strong project structure in place. We are reviewing risks and issues associated with the build-up of the new contract coming in. At this stage, we don't see any risks for any of the key areas, so vehicles, premises, staffing, technology, getting the data across from HTG so that there is a smooth transfer of patients who are booked prior to EMAS taking over the journeys that will happen once EMAS take over, so after 1st of July. However, I think it would be unrealistic to suggest that there are no risks. And with any mobilisation of this scale, there is always something that might come and bite us towards the kind of the key dates in the process. The ICB is planning to do a thorough walkthrough of the system that EMAS have in. Vehicles are expected to arrive in May, so we'll go and have a look at the vehicles. We'll test the technology and we'll do that in time, just to make sure that any unforeseen issues can be picked up and addressed. If I then move on to eligibility criteria, there was new eligibility criteria that was published nationally in May 22. That replaces the previous criteria, which in my view is inadequate, that had been out since 2007. And that eligibility criteria, published in 2007, was open very much to local interpretation. The new criteria is much more prescriptive. It starts on a premise that most people should travel to hospital independently or with the help of friends and family. It's more prescriptive in what criteria we should apply to decide whether patients would get free NHS-funded patient transport. And it's really clear now that it says that that should only be provided when it's essential for safety, condition management, or recovery. And it also says that patients need to be referred by a doctor, a dentist, or an optician. That's a criteria that we will apply, but we will still allow patients to request journeys. And then we'll ask them the question about whether they've been referred by their doctor, their dentist, or optician. And then further, there are six qualifying criteria. They're listed in the paper. I don't intend to go through those in detail. I think just a kind of final comment on this. We've largely been working in Lincolnshire to the spirit of the new eligibility criteria for some time now. So I don't think there are going to be many significant changes in the number or type of patients that get patient transport funded by the NHS as we start to apply these criteria. So I don't think there will be any major changes. The one thing I would flag is that there is now a kind of a universal commitment for patients attending renal dialysis. So we would expect an increase, slight increase in numbers who are funded for NHS patient transport, who are attending renal dialysis. I hope that's an adequate brief run-through of the report. I'm happy to take any questions. Just to note that Will from EMAS has now been able to join us.
Thank you, Tim. Yeah, and thank you and welcome, Will. Right, first person I've got is Councillor Allen.
Thank you, Chairman, and welcome to our presenters. I've got two questions, one of which is to do with the way the contract operates, and one of which is to do with the relationship between the straightforward emergency ambulance and the specialist transport element that we're talking about here. So the question I got is, it was to do with the point that was made right at the end of the presentation in terms of referrals for the non-emergency transport. And it's to do with decisions that might be made in relation to accepting the referrals and actually providing the service or not. Is that HTG that does it, because it certainly sounded like it was their decision about whether they accept the eligibility satisfactions. But then that raised the question with me in terms of how the contract works. Does the contract provide a certain amount of funding to the contractor when the service is used? Or is this a sort of bulk amount? And it's there to provide the service and it's up to them to determine eligibility? What's running behind my mind on this is, does the contract generate more money if they actually say no to the referral? Because the more people they put through the system, you know, the more it affects the actual contract value. So I'm sure it can't work like that, but I'd like some confirmation about how it does actually operate, so that the decision is made purely on the eligibility and not to maximise profits. The second question is to do with the interactions between the ambulance, the emergency ambulance service and the new non-emergency transport system. Whilst you could say it might be beneficial in terms of having economies of scale with one organisation providing both services, I do wonder then whether ambulance drivers maybe won't move from one part to another part, depending on where the issues and the problems are, which might be in detriment, you know, if they were moved from the emergency service to the non-emergency service, that might be detrimental to the emergency service. So what is, how are the two contracts actually operated in reality to ensure that, you know, the particular service in question is being provided? And it's not a question of disbenefiting one service to keep the other service going if there's a major problem. And I suppose what's just behind that is that some of the problems that existed with the current contractor will continue to exist with the new contractor as well. It's not going to solve the problem in terms of recruitment and so on. There's always going to be those pressures on whoever the contractor is, so.
Shall I start with the response, and then I'll bring in Joy and Will for comment. In terms of the eligibility criteria and the impact that has on the commercial operation of the contract, I just need to be careful that I don't betray any commercial confidences, but I'll be as open and honest as I can be. The eligibility criteria is set nationally. It's hardwired into the contract, and it's hardwired into both the current HTG contract, and it's hardwired into the contract that we've just signed with EMAS. So we expect the provider to operate that eligibility criteria. And we take a very close view as the ICB as to whether that is applied correctly or whether it isn't applied correctly. It's kind of a partnership and a dialogue between the provider and the ICB. And we always get, always get a few exceptions. And then the ICB will make a decision based on our policy as to whether the patient would be eligible or whether they wouldn't be. The way the contract operates, the contract with HTG has been a set sum of money for the contract over each of the years. And therefore, you could argue that if they apply the eligibility criteria to the absolute better, or if they decide to be more onerous and decide not to do journeys, you could argue that that goes into their profit. We get quite close to those types of decisions as an ICB, and we review it on a regular basis as to how the eligibility criteria is working. We also review activity numbers. We also look at patterns of what does it feel like across different categories of transport. So I can't say that there is, in every case, a very, absolute in terms of eligibility criteria is not being applied correctly. But our view is that it is absolutely being applied correctly within the HTG contract. And we'll carry that forward into the relationship that we have with EMAS. In terms of the way the two contracts, the 999 emergency contract and the patient transport contract works, I think there are clear benefits to be gained, although we didn't know it at the time that we procured that EMAS would be the winner of the contract. There are clear benefits from having the 999 provider and the patient transport provider working together. It gives a much greater opportunity to manage issues of flow within the hospitals. So if there are ambulances that need to get patients into hospital, and the hospital is unable to discharge because patient transport isn't sufficient, or there are issues with patient transport, EMAS now have control of both of those areas. And I think that will be really beneficial. But I'll bring in Joy and Will just to give a bit more perspective on how the differential between the 999 side and the patient transport side works.
Thanks very much. I'll start the response. And apologies for joining the meeting a few minutes later after the item had started. So just to give assurance on the way that EMAS operates, 999 and PTS services, they are actually under different leadership structures internally in the organisation. So Joy, who's joined the call today, is responsible for all of our PTS services. So she is, has autonomy and sits alongside our Lincolnshire 999 frontline response service, as well as all of the other counties' response services. So she's seen as a peer in that group. And Lincolnshire 999 service, as I say, sits alongside PTS rather than it being run as one and the same. That's also true for the control room and dispatch function. So Joy runs a PTS control room and a PTS dispatch function, which will function specifically for Lincolnshire PTS that is separate to the 999 control room. There are services across the country, ambulance services across the country, who have taken the step to integrate those. That's not something at this moment in time that we're looking to do. What we are looking to do, and again, this will come through the maturity of the contract, once we go live and once we are happy that everything is stable, what we want to do is we want to see whether there's opportunities where, if we've got any potential capacity within PTS which could support 999, where there's a patient which needs to be moved in an urgent fashion and it's appropriate for PTS to do so, it would be, I would suggest, foolish as a system for us not to do that, if there's the capacity to do so, and it's not at detriment to the PTS services. However, that will be a future benefit rather than something that we've predetermined and built into our service model from day one. So the service model from day one is absolutely about delivering the PTS service for Lincolnshire to the specification for the contract which has been let. And that doesn't rely on any part of the 999 contract and vice versa. I don't know whether Joy, there's anything I don't know whether Joy, there's anything you want to add on the ground in terms of how that works day to day?
Yeah, hello everybody. It was just to offer further assurance that we don't backfill either of the services with staff from either one. We recruit specifically into those positions. And as Will and Tim have already mentioned, that joint awareness of the whole system, the system pressures, the opportunities, the work that we can do together is really important that everybody's cited on that and has that part to play in delivering and maintaining flow and also ensuring that everybody gets, you know, taken to wherever they need to on time. And so there isn't an excessive pressure in one service or the other. We also do support each other, so there are times where there are pressures. Or if there's a major incident or anything from a day-to-day perspective that happens and occurs and we're able to have that control and command structure to be able to talk to each other as well. And so we find that we're able to use that opportunity to ensure that any element of those cases are dealt with in one service and it makes it more seamless and it provides a greater patient experience. And from the recruitment challenges that have been talked about as well, we're able to open our opportunities to alternative ways of working as well by having a bigger structure, bigger facility, estate footprint. And so that enables us to be able to support community and recruitment in a way that's slightly different to the incumbent providers as well.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm confident that the ICB is going to keep a careful eye on how the contract operates and make sure that there aren't excessive profits being made within it. And perhaps it'll come back and give us that comfort again at some stage once the contract's been operating. I did say that, you know, I could see lots of opportunities for economies of scale in terms of one organisation providing both the emergency service and the non-emergency service elements of the ambulance provision. And you have mentioned some of those. You mean, there's obviously, you know, call centres that could be combined and all those sort of subsidiary things, you know, the administration and the management side of things. You mentioned something even more appropriate and attractive, which is, you know, actually using spare capacity with one part of the service to supplement the other one. And those are all very good. And I'm sure everybody at this committee would support that sort of thing. The difficulty is that, you know, there's organizational benefits and service benefits and then there's end user benefits. And what we're concentrating on is the end user benefits and how those are guaranteed, you know, rather than these opportunities being used to benefit yourselves. But I think it's a question of seeing how it goes. There should be opportunities if everybody does the sort of things that you've been talking about. So we look forward to that, I'm sure.
May I just come back on the issue of end user benefits? When we went out to procure this contract, we were very keen as an ICB to make sure that those end user benefits were reported, recorded, well-defined and we could have a line of sight to that. So the way the contract is structured, it asks for what's the story around patient satisfaction? It also asks for what's the story around the satisfaction with the service of our hospital and community providers? And we've got not really a KPI, but there's a mechanism in the contract where EMAS will need to report that to us. And there is a risk to EMAS income under the contract if that isn't satisfactory. So we've got a mechanism in there that really tries to put a much greater focus in a different way than we've had in previous contracts on that how important it is to make sure that patients are getting a good service and to make sure that the flow and hospital interaction works well.
Okay, thank you. I've got no one else indicated as yet, but I've got a considerable amount of questions, Tim, which I'm sure you won't be surprised to hear. My first question is, is there anything you can add about the number of patient complaints on the existing contractor? As these were a concern previously for the committee?
So complaints are stable. They've gone down over the last six months. If you wish me to, I can get a detailed response to the committee on that, giving the number of complaints and the type of areas where those complaints have happened. I don't have that data in my head at the moment, but I'm certainly happy to share it.
Useful, thank you. I've just had Liz Bull come in, so I'll bring her in before I carry on.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks, Tim, for the presentation. Nice to see you. Oh, it was. Just a couple of questions from the Health Watch point of view, if I may. You talked very much about the eligibility criteria into other colleagues in the room. But when the new service is launched, I'm keen to know how you're going to try and not raise patients' expectations. Because when they know a new service is there, then the expectations will be raised naturally by that service launch. And then the second point is a bit of an historical one, really, that you probably know I'm aware of from sitting in health scrutiny previously. But the aspect of the volunteer drivers was a real big issue last time with the TASSL contract. And what assurances can you give that the volunteer drivers are going to be supported and continue to provide this important service to the patients of Lincolnshire? Thank you.
Okay, so I'll pick up the issue on patient expectation. I'll ask Will and Joy to pick up the issue on volunteer drivers, if that's okay. I think that our experience of the HTG TASSL contract has been that some demand has been suppressed. And I think that if we have a, what I hope will be a much improved service in the county, then it may be that more patients apply to have patient transport and those patients, some of those patients will be eligible. We've got a mechanism in the contract to guard against that. So the contract has a mechanism in it where if activity rises significantly, we will have a discussion with EMAS and there's a payment mechanism for that. You mentioned, Liz, about how will we try and avoid, I think you said, try and avoid patient expectation growing? I'm not sure we want it not to grow. This is about getting patients to the right place if they are eligible. So the eligibility criteria stands and we will apply that fairly inconsistently. And if that means that more patients are eligible and more patients are transferred to hospital or from hospital, that's what we'll manage. I don't know, Will, Joy, do you want to pick up the issue on volunteer drivers?
Yeah, I'll respond to that. So from a volunteer driver perspective, they're very much part of our service delivery model. We have the same within our other contracts and they're a very, very integral part of our team. And with Derbyshire as well, they've won a couple of awards in the previous years as well. So we're really focused on supporting volunteers, growing that team, but also using local volunteer teams as well and the sector as a whole. So that is very much part of our strategy going forward and hope that that offers some assurance and that we will continue to work with the current volunteers that are already out there, but also look to expand as we progress through the contract.
Thank you. Just building on from that, what sort of feedback have you had from them so far? I think that's quite an important question that really needs to be put there because it's good to hear that you've got such a good system over in Derbyshire, but actually what they've come forward and said they like or dislike moving forwards, I suppose.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, we haven't met with the volunteer team yet, so we should be in a position to do that as part of our engagement strategy in the coming months. And so we'll be engaging with both staff and volunteers as well to start working through how they currently work, what it is that they want to be a part of, how much engagement would they like and how much involvement they want to have in growing the team going forward. So that is part of our engagement strategy in the next couple of months.
Okay, thank you. I've got another few questions, please. So, looking at the latest performance figure from HTG, they are still seemingly miles off ever getting close to reaching the targets that were required in the first place. So how closely will you be monitoring EMAS performance against these? And are there built-in contract break clauses as this new contract is for a considerable period of time?
Okay, so if I deal with the last point first, in terms of break clauses, there is no formal break clause in the contract. However, the NHS standard contract has terms and conditions where the commissioner can, the ICB can give notice on the contract. So if the provider is in significant breach, we can give notice on the contract. I hope we won't get to that point. I don't want to get to that point, but it's there if we need to use it. In terms of managing EMAS, we've got a slightly different structure in the new contract around KPIs. Following the national review of patient transport, there is a national dataset. And that gives things like time on vehicle, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So similar to the KPIs which were in the original contract with HTG, but much more expansive. And EMAS will report on that national dataset. That gives us information. What we're not doing in the contract is asking EMAS to have a penalty if those metrics are not improved upon or are not meeting a particular threshold. What we've done is we've moved that around so that, as I said before, patient satisfaction and hospital practitioner, community practitioner satisfaction is a real key element to the drivers behind this contract and the relationship that we want with EMAS. So EMAS have a kind of an overarching KPI in the contract that says they've got to deliver really good patient satisfaction. They've got to deliver really good hospital practitioner, community practitioner satisfaction. They've also got to deliver social value. So that was really key for us when we were constructing the contract. So it really moves it to focus on the key elements of, does this make a difference to patients? Does it make a difference to flow across the system? Does it mean that we've got patients waiting in the foyer of Lincoln County Hospital who can't get out on patient transport because it's not kind of there at the point in time that they need it? If patients are saying there's no satisfaction and hospitals are saying there's no satisfaction with the service, then EMAS are at risk of losing income. And I think that's much more important, having a suite of KPIs that may not be achieved, or if they are achieved, may be only just achieved. So I think it makes it more real, in my opinion. I don't know, Joy, Will, if you want to comment on that?
Thank you, Tim. Yeah, I would agree. I think the focus on patient experience for this contract allows us to do the right thing for the patient rather than trying to effectively hit a metric, which sometimes isn't the right thing for the patient. I think we've seen, certainly through experience of running PTS for many years in EMAS, occasionally KPIs are set with the right intention at the start of a contract, but have inadvertent consequences on the ground for patients. And a good example of that would be, you know, effectively a renal patient which might have a KPI around not getting to the particular facility X amount of time before their appointment. So you have to hit a very specific time window where actually they might want to be there an hour before their appointment because they're used to seeing one of their friends who's there and they might want a cup of coffee or they might want to socially interact and that's part of their week. So actually, there's some very specific elements where KPIs just feel a little bit too arbitrary as part of service delivery for PTS. And I think the focus on patient outcomes and patient experience for this contract, I think, is a really progressive step forward in terms of patient care. So I'm really looking forward to being able to run a contract which works in this way.
Okay, thank you. Will, EMAS be relying as heavily on third-party contractors as HTG have? And who are likely to be the supporting contractors, if so?
Joy, do you want to talk a little bit about our service model?
Yeah. And so from our service model perspective, there will be some element of third-party in there. They build an element of resilience and surge capacity. And so that's how we build third-party into our operational model. Our model is mainly our own staff, our own vehicles, resources, and they're strategically located. There's quite a number of sites across Lincolnshire. And then what we'll do is, particularly at the very beginning, so there'll be a couple of steps in terms of how we mobilise and understand then the the picture of activity and how we then move on to develop. And so we will be utilising the current third-party provision at the moment so that we don't go in and undermine some of the good work that's already underway and that's ongoing. And then we will do the approach of reviewing and looking at how then we progress and move forward. But third-party is a good element of service delivery model. And like I say, in that surge capacity, it's really helpful to be able to respond quickly without having to rely on recruitment of either additional staff or, you know, if you have a period where where there's progression from your own team or a challenge to recruit. So they are in there, but not as a full reliance, I suppose, in want to a better term.
Okay, thank you. Have EMAS made arrangements to successfully recruit to all elements of the non-emergency services? Or are we likely to see similar recruitment and retention issues as experienced by TASSL as it was?
So we've got, sorry, you okay if I go for this one? Yeah. So we have a plan to recruit ahead of the go-live date. So we're now in a position to enable and to start engaging with staff with HTG. But there will be some shortfalls in the service model. So we've got a plan to do recruitment ahead of time so that we can get staff trained, ready to go for the first of July. We're also, as Tim alluded to earlier, around the call-taking and control element. So we're in a good position to be able to recruit to those positions ahead of time. And also, we offer a model of of multiple options, really. So we have bases within Lincolnshire, but we also have our control centre at Horizon Place, which provides resilience. But also we have a model where we enable people to work from home as well, so that supports that social value, that ability to recruit wider for people who have a challenge in, you know, getting to Lincoln from remote areas and things. And so this provides a good opportunity as well through the recruitment to be able to offer people who perhaps wouldn't have been able to take those positions before. So we've got an opportunity to go wider and further afield for those positions. And also, we have that model in our other services and we're able to offer flexibility, all the things that people want from a position. And so from a recruitment and retention perspective, that hopefully puts us in a good position ahead of the mobilisation date, but obviously continuing to go forward. And we're also then in that position as an organisation. We've got opportunities for people who want to progress their careers as well. And so that gives lots of opportunities for people within Lincolnshire to undertake different routes and things once they're working for us as well.
Okay, thank you. And my final question, are you able to expand on the premise location for EMAS's non-emergency patient transport within Lincolnshire?
Yeah, I mean, I've got a list of sites. I mean, are those something that you want? I can run through the list for you now if that's okay?
That'd be useful, thank you.
Yeah, okay. So we've got a site in North Highcombe, so Lincoln, so that's So we've got a site in North Highcombe, so Lincoln, so that's on a Lindem business site. We've got Boston, which is the current HTG site, so they already have a base there, which is suitable for us to use. We'll be using our EMAS current sites, so that's at Gainsborough, Grantham, Hull Beach, Skegness, Mabelthorpe and Stamford. And we will be doing some collaborative work with healthcare sites at Louth, Grantham, Lincoln County, Boston Pilgrim and Spalding. And we also have market raising, Newark and the Urgent Treatment Centre at Skegness.
Excellent, thank you. I think there's no one else that's indicated to speak, so I'm going to therefore move to a proposal. I propose we note the existing contractor's average performance over the life of the contract has not met any of the contract targets and to look forward to a smooth transition from the existing contractor to the new contractor, the East Midlands Ambulance Services, from the first of July 2023, and to take further update in 12 months' time. To have a second to my proposal, thank you, councillor Allen. All those in favour, please show. Thank you, that's supported unanimously. And I would just like to thank you all for coming along today and we look forward to seeing you again in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll now move on to agenda item eight, the consultation on mental health rehabilitation care and the proposed response of the committee to the consultation. This item was circulated as part of the agenda pack, page 65 to 70. This report invited the committee to approve its response to the current NHS consultation. I'll hand over to Simon.
Thank you, thank you, Chairman. The consultation on mental health rehabilitation care was presented to the committee on the 18th of January. The committee had also had previous consideration of that particular topic back in October 2022. This item invites the committee to approve its response to the consultation. The response attached at appendix A, pages 68 to 70 inclusive, was drafted on the basis of the comments made at the meeting in January. It was circulated to members of the committee prior to it being issued with the agenda and the comments received were taken on board. So this is really a matter for the committee to determine whether it wishes to make any additional comments. And then the committee's requested to approve it as its final response. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Simon. Any comments? No? Okay, in which case I would just like to say thank you to Simon. I think it's an excellent response and it's picked up on everything that came out during the committee. So I'm happy to propose it from the chair. Do I have a second, please, councillor Lynda Wooton? All those in favour, please show. Thank you, that's supported unanimously. So we'll now move on to agenda item nine, the work programme. Simon, again.
Thank you, Chairman. If I could draw the committee's attention to page 72, which sets out the items from March onwards, pages 72 onwards. We've got two important items in the list for March. One is the Urgent and Emergency Care System, which is a system overview of urgent and emergency care, including urgent treatment centres as well as A and E. The other item is what is called the NHS People Board Update, which is essentially about the recruitment strategy, the Lincolnshire-wide recruitment strategy, which I think perhaps links in, well, I suppose it links in with every item really on each agenda, but it certainly links in with some of the questions on the first item this morning. I'll stop there and take any questions. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Simon. Any questions? Councillor Cleaver?
Yes, could I ask about the Integrated Care Strategy 2023 engagement plan, which is planned for April? Is that this committee being asked to comment on the engagement plan rather than the actual draft that's going to go out that we're asking people to engage on, if you see what I mean? Because I'm obviously concerned that this committee is fully engaged with what that strategy is going to be and not just being, not just being asked how we think that the public should be engaged with it.
Thank you, Chairman. It is how the public and this committee will engage with the plan later in the year rather than the plan itself. Thank you, Chairman.
Councillor Smith?
Thank you, Chair. Do we know who the contributors are for the temporary closure of the Harts Home Centre in March?
They've not yet been confirmed. I mean, one of the things with that particular item, it may be, and this is perhaps something the committee way, it may not be ready by that date, which I suppose is a doubt, but also it may be something which the committee, it may not necessarily merit a full substantive item, but maybe the committee is seeking a full item rather than something that could be reported in the chairman's announcements. Thank you.
I don't, we'll judge that as it moves along, Simon. As of the moment in time, I would have thought an announcement would suffice, but I may even see what the committee view as we move forward. Okay? Anything else on the work programme? No? Okay, in which case I'll bring the meeting to a close and thank you all for your attendance today. Thank you.